Gazette had an article in it recently about the Homestead Tax Credit. And the fact that unlike previous years where that, where the state gave homeowners a rebate to limit the tax increase to 10% per year. Unlike that, that's happened in the past, this year, you have to actually apply for that rebate. And I think it would be important for this council to do everything that we can to make sure the public is aware of that and homeowners are aware of that. I wonder if maybe we shouldn't have a brief discussion of that at one of our council meetings to highlight that, because I think many homeowners are going to be shocked when they find they don't receive that credit automatically this year.
So, I was doing something here and I caught the end of that and that was about...
I was just asking, I was just asking if our Housing Department couldn't come and give us a short briefing on the Homestead Tax Credit?
Mike, but my understanding is that that message goes out in the assessment and it's going out with the triennial assessment this year, then it'll go out over the next two years, and the implementation for that is some year like 2011.
Well, that was 2014, but it's several years before it takes effect.
And, and all homeowners will get that in their assessment notice, and that will be the form that they can send in to do it. So, we don't have to do it again for like two years. It won't be effective for a year after that.
Okay, maybe I just need clarity myself, and I thought this was an issue that would be helpful to the community.
Yeah, I would like an official, just quick, even if it's just a page from the city manager, the Housing Department on it, because I was under a similar theory as Terry was, that it was going to happen sooner. So, I'm glad to hear that it's not, but it would be nice to have an official sort of...
Thank you, that's all.
Colleen, and then Josh.
Really? Nice. So, I'm back from my vacation, which was very lovely. Florida was not as warm as I had hoped, but it was warmer than it was here. And I want everyone to know that Mickey Mouse is doing, doing fine and well, and is prospering. So, if anyone has any comments that they want to send to me, I am back and available. It's probably going to take me a couple of days to make it through all of my email, though. I noticed that we have had some continuing concerns about crime and also continuing positive response from the Police Department, particularly regarding the basement burglaries that have gone on, but it continues to be an issue of high concern for the, for the residents in Ward Two and I believe Ward Three as well.
Josh?
I just want to thank the city manager and their brave way for getting what I'll continue to refer to as the doohickeys that are right near the crosswalks in front of the library there, reinstalled by the State Highway Authority. Those little flappers that stick up that alerts you that there is a crosswalk there. When they repaved the road, they took them out and it took quite a while to get them back up, but they're back up, and I definitely think it makes the streets safer for pedestrians in that area. So, thank you.
Dan, and then Doug?
Crime is a, on the, in front of everyone's, a lot of people's minds in my ward, and I'm appreciating the chief for coming to our neighborhood associations and addressing those concerns, and look forward to working with him. The neighborhood associations are also, some are asking questions about what their responsibility to the city are and what the city's responsibility to them is, and I'd like to see us discuss, start that discussion in some way, perhaps when we talk about the committee structure.
I was very happy to see the deployment of new trash cans along New Hampshire Avenue. They're unobtrusive and seem to be effective, and the thanks go to the city manager and Public Works Department. I think they had some internal discussions about what kind of can to be rolled out, and they came to a consensus, and they look attractive. And the area continues to be a challenge for the city and the county, because there's still an awful lot of trash and we're barely able to keep on top of it, but the new cans are certainly making a contribution, and we're glad to see them.
I'd like to make one comment that will segue into the next item, which is additional agenda items and agenda scheduling update. I just wanted to note that the city clerk has had a severe medical emergency in her family and is not with us this evening and may not be in attendance at the council meeting for another week or two, and we hope all of that works out well. Therefore, one of the big agenda items for next week's meeting was to be the discussion on what the council wants to do about committees and committee structure and just the overall look at committees. That's something that she's been working on, and so in her absence, we will not be able to do that item. So, the, all of the rolling agenda and everything that's gone out up until now for the meeting for February 4th has needed to be revised just in the last day or so, and so I just wanted to point out to folks that that will not be coming up. And what we will be doing next week is kind of a more expanded version of that work session on affordable housing, reviewing the existing affordable housing policy and action plan. We'll also be looking at other affordable housing programs, and that will take up a good bit of the meeting. And we will also have a discussion, a new item, a discussion of proposed Montgomery County zoning text amendment 0801 revising the definition of a green area. So, next week's meeting looks a little different than it has up until now. Also, I just wanted to remind folks in terms of the agenda structure that in general, the way these meetings are set up is that the first and third Mondays of the month are work session agendas, and the second and fourth Mondays are regular meetings with resolutions and ordinances and legislative action. And to the extent that we can, we will try and stick with that, so that you'll notice that tonight, there are a lot of voting items, and we'll just try and, as much as possible, group those on the second and fourth meetings of the month. And that leaves, every couple of months, a fifth Monday, and we'll try and schedule those either for special topics or occasionally maybe a Monday off. We'll see how that works out. And I had Dan mentioned about possibly having the, rolling in some of the discussion about neighborhood associations with the committee discussion, and we had talked about that a little bit, and I think that is something that we ought to do, and so anybody who has any thoughts about, any issues about how the city deals with neighborhood associations, we will try and roll that into that same discussion. I'd like to remind everybody that this Thursday, we have a special meeting, the 31st, and that will be identifying council priorities, and that will be a meeting at 7:30 in this room. And the agenda that you all got in your packet shows us going until 10 o'clock. I don't think we will be going until 10 o'clock, but that's up to us. And finally, if I can just point out about tonight's meeting, that I tried to do what we've talked about doing. We have a number of items on the consent agenda. I do know that we will be pulling one of them, so when we get there, we can, we can do that. But to the extent that we can, I hope that we can continue to put items on the consent agenda, remembering that any item that needs to be pulled, all a council member has to do is say they want to pull it. And we will, remind me if I forget, because we will have some single reading ordinances for money, appropriating money already in the budget and awarding contracts on the consent agenda, that we will be doing a roll call vote on the consent agenda. Now's the time for public comments. If there are any members of the public who care to comment on anything not on our voting agenda this evening, now's the time. Then the city manager has any comments?
Just a few items. I think just a few moments ago, there was some discussion about the Homestead Tax Credit program. I'll just pass this down. This is a blurb that's appearing in this edition of the city newsletter about that. So, if you all could take a look at that, and if it's not responsive to council member rights concern, for maybe a little bit more information, just let me know, and we can certainly try to see what other information we can provide you. The only other comment I just wanted to make is, as the mayor mentioned, the council priority session is Thursday evening. I had asked the mayor if he was, thought it would be appropriate for staff to take a shot at looking at the issues and feedback that we got from our residents in the recent survey, and maybe suggest some actions that the staff thought the city should take to maybe respond to those concerns, and the mayor was amenable to that suggestion. So, we'll be trying to get something to you prior to Thursday night, just so you have a chance to kind of look at what our thoughts might be in responding to at least that specific set of issues. Other than that, I would just remind the council that there is a closed session next Monday to get some legal advice on the community center. I will be trying to prepare some background materials and get that in your box to accompany Friday's packet. And that's it, unless there's any questions.
Sure.
Not a question, a compliment. I thank you for being so responsive to the issues that were brought up just this evening, and you already have copies passed down the line. I'm impressed.
Already published in the news.
That would be my fine staff who's upstairs, working late and watching the meeting.
But not only that, but it all, the article was written and already formatted and ready to go into print. I mean, this is incredible.
It's in print, the newsletters have.
Okay.
Our compliments to Sarah Gaines.
And so, people are already finding their homes, and I encourage people not to ignore this article in the city newsletter, because it does say it's going to cost you money this year in your taxes if you do not respond to this this year.
Maybe I'd better read it, too. Now, for the questions, then we will move on to the regular meeting and our first agenda item, which is a resolution offering condolences to the friends and family of State Senator Gwendolyn Britt. Suzanne, do you have?
Yes, just, I just wanted to mention that we had already acknowledged the passing of State Senator Gwendolyn Britt, and we do want to pass this resolution this evening, but her family and also members of both the Montgomery County and Prince George's County delegation have other activities scheduled for this evening, so cannot be here. So, we're hoping to arrange a time when both the family and some of the coworkers of Senator Britt would be able to attend. I know they're very interested in seeing this, and we're very happy to hear that this was being considered by the council.
So, that we'll be happy to accommodate whatever their schedules are and...
Yes, it could be presented here or it could be presented somewhere else, depending on how the schedule works out.
Right, good. And if need be, I could, I'm going to Olinopolis with some regularity. We could do something there if that was appropriate.
I'll follow up.
Anybody have any comments? I'll just say that she had taken a very strong leadership position on a number of issues that were important to the city, and was poised to do so on issues that are important right now, issues that are important in this legislative session. I was looking forward to working with her on the, on the marriage bill that got submitted late last week. She was going to be the lead sponsor on that. She has a long history on civil rights issues and was, was very strong in that area, and letting her family and colleagues know that we really appreciate all the work that she's done. So, would somebody like to move the resolution?
I'll move it.
Seconded. Moved by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Barry. Are there any public comments on the resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item is a resolution, resolution offering condolences to the friends and family of former city manager, city administrator, Jim Wilson.
Yes, I don't like doing so many condolences, I have to say.
No.
This has been very rough. But Mr. Wilson had been ill for some time, and we were very sad to hear of his passing. Much of the information about his tenure came from the Habita, who has quite extensive background on all of the things he did. I tried to summarize it here in a one-page format as a nice presentation, but there really is a lot of detail on what he did for the city. He was the city administrator for eight years, and a number of the things that happened under his tenure were, you know, computers came to Tacoma Park, which was a new thing. Lots of kind of personnel-related improvements were made during his time. And he also was here during the improvements in Old Town, including the installation of the Old Town clock and the brick sidewalks and that kind of thing. So, a lot of things, both intangibly and tangibly, were imprinted by Mr. Wilson. Also, just personally, although I did not work under him, he would come by the city hall frequently, and he had good insight on issues, and it was a pleasure speaking with him and hearing his thoughts. So, it's a little, it's sad that that won't happen anymore, and we do have a lot of condolence for his performance.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I, as I started to become involved in issues in the city, was right at the end of his tenure, and I didn't get to know him real well, but my sense was that he brought up, he was here as the, as the city staff kind of geared up to another level, kind of the professionalism and the instituting of these various forms in the city government that, that was kind of a upgrade to all of the types of things that were done and formalizing of some relationships and kind of, in many ways, growing into this building. And that, that professionalism was, was very welcome, and I know that a lot of people were, felt very warmly about him, and in his coming back to the city and back in and seeing people and going out to lunch with people and continuing to talk about issues, it was that, that warmth that he, that he felt for the city and that many people who worked here and live here felt for him that made it possible for him to have that continuing relationship with the city. I think it was very valuable.
That was very nice.
Any other comments? Are there any public comments? Did we move the resolution? We did? No, that, that was the other one, so. So, you, moved by Councilmember Barry and seconded by Councilmember Siemens. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Moving on to item number three. Item number three is a resolution commenting on a proposed WSSC rate increase and fee for infrastructure improvements, and many of you may have read some of the articles in the paper about this item. The Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission, which takes care of the water and sewer for Montgomery County and Prince George's County, is trying, trying to grapple with the fact that they have an aging system and they need to improve it. What they have done is propose a fairly substantial rate increase. One is a 9.5% increase in their base rate, as well as about a $20 a month infrastructure renewal fee. There will be public hearings coming up on February 6th and February 7th about these rate increases, but I will say that, at least from, from my view, they seem to be proposed fairly, in a surprising way, and so I think we're all trying to figure out what all this means. One of the things that we looked at in drafting a resolution about this, and I'm open to, this was done in a relatively quick fashion, so I'm welcoming any kinds of comments. But first of all, I think that it's fair to acknowledge that, that the city of Tacoma Park's infrastructure is very old. It's, we've got records of, you know, in the 80-year-old range of a lot of the pipes in this area, and we certainly have had many disruptions lately that were quite significant. Stopped traffic on New Hampshire Avenue, have had problems with whole neighborhoods not having enough water, as Councilmember Clay knows. And so, certainly there are some problems. Nevertheless, one of the things that I think has been the center of some concern is the fact that once you have things like $20 a month fees, you've got a situation where it's not a progressive kind of a payment, and it could affect some people in a very significant way, and, and we're all faced with some of the rising costs of the area anyway. So, this was something that I think could have some very negative impacts on many of our residents. Another concern that I have, have heard from a number of people is that in the work that has been done in replacing some of the pipes in our community, the, there's been quite a delay before they, they say they're going to start working on it in such a month, and it's several months later before they begin that work. And then, there's been a lack of communication among the contractor and the neighborhoods and the city staff and other parties. So, one of the concerns that I have heard is a concern that there be capacity within WSSC to manage a wholesale replacement program of the magnitude that they've sketched out here with, that would be paid for by these fees. That's something that, you know, would be interesting to hear from WSSC, what that, what that plan would be. I have, one of the things that I know the mayor raised a question about is the second whereas clause, which uses figures from a Washington Post article about how much a rate increase there would be. The Washington Post article said that most Montgomery County and Prince George's Counties residents would see a rate increase from $150 to $225 each quarter. I don't know if that's accurate. It's taken from a Post article. What is certainly accurate is the estimate from WSSC, which would be about $20 for an average residential home a month for the monthly renewal fee and the 9.5% basic rate increase.
And I think that my question was based on one possible way to read that, and as you talked about it, I thought, oh, that maybe that's not what you meant, or what the Post meant in writing it. If they're saying that the current quarterly bill is $150 and it would go to $225, I could easily see that. I was reading, I was reading it as...
I took it from the post.
The bill will go up by anywhere from $150 to $225, and I thought, that seems a little high.
So, that, however, if, if we would like that clarified, I perfectly understand, as you mentioned, we've been functioning a little shorthanded with the city clerk's emergency, so this was our best take at, at drafting something that is important.
If, if I can just add that one of my main concerns is WSSC, in addition to making sure that it doesn't impact low-income residents severely with, with this, I think it's a needed improvement. I think WSSC has to come up with some ways to address low-income residents. I think that in many ways, the bigger question for the city as a whole and WSSC is if they have the capacity to manage this kind of project. There have, there have been issues with, as Suzanne mentioned, not only their communications with residents whose streets have been posted, but also with the city. I know in the case of my street, it was, it was posted for work to begin August 1, and in talking with the WSSC contacts, they said it would take more than a month, but not two months, and it took four to five months, and it's still not finished. And when they met with the, with the Public Works Director, they didn't know what she was so upset about until they went out and walked around with her and then went, oh, you're right, there are problems. Their, their ability to manage their contractor, I, I talked with the contractor on a daily basis while they were on our street, and they were very nice folks, and they were, they were doing some good work, but it took forever, and the results weren't what they should have been. And in talking with the WSSC inspector, he said that he was helpless in many ways to do what he felt needed to be done, because his hands were tied. He didn't have the ability to enforce many of the things that were a common sense approach toward managing this project. So, if WSSC isn't set up internally to manage this, it's never going to work well. And I just, I just think there, there needs to be some comfort level on the part of residents and governments in this area, that they're dealing with an entity that can manage this The other thing is that in, in doing this kind of major work, it's causing major disruption to our streets, which we've been trying to get back on a, on a better maintenance schedule, and we, we took out a bond and we've done major street work. We've been coordinating with WSSC and trying to do that work only after they've done their work, but if they're doing this kind of major work, do they have that kind of agreement with other governments in this area? It's a, it's a major cutting up of the street, and we, if they, if they were to come in and could manage this size project, and did come in and do the kind of work that they're talking about that this money would pay for, we wouldn't be able to keep up with them in bringing our streets back to any semblance of good order. And depending on your point of view, some people would think that was good, because it makes the streets so impassable that they don't get traffic down the street. I've heard that viewpoint. So, any other comments on this? Colleen?
In the, I think, 38 years that I lived in California, I must have owned vehicles for 20 years of that time, and it wasn't until I moved to Maryland that I had to replace the struts and other, other components that make my wheels operate independently. Sorry, I'm not a mechanic, but... And it's because of the horrible condition of the roads. I, I fear that I'm about to have to do it again, and it costs about $300 a wheel, and I don't drive that much. So, that's, that's a problem. You know, when we talk about a, a rate increase here, there are a lot of impacts that this kind of activity have beyond just the cost of the, the water and, you know, the $20. I think that it's, I think what they meant is a change from $150 now to $225 as I calculate that, which is, that's significant. But the other side effects of the, the impact that this has related to the, the planning are significant. If we're going to tear up all of our streets again, I think that there has to be a, a change in the law, that somebody who tears up a street has to replace it, rather than this, well, we put a patch on it and now you have to come back and, and cope with this. This should be coordinated as, as, with the state and, and the county and, and the city governments. And, and I don't, I, I don't support a rate increase that doesn't take all of these other factors into account. You know, one of the things that strikes me is that we have all these hurricanes and winds and trees falling on things, and you're going to crack open the entire street, why not drop the utilities at the same time? If, you know, if they're going to do just a major overhaul of what the streets are like, I think they need to do more coordination and look at all of the various things that are impacted by that and, and do them, do them together, instead of this, this deal where, well, we do a street here and we do a street there, and then you have to come back and fix it, and then later we're going to come back and do another thing. I think on Davis, they had to do it twice because they did it wrong. Elm Avenue was torn up for a year and a half. I have no confidence in their ability to make a project function in a way that really provides a meaningful end result for their, for their consumers, let alone the, the impact that it's going to have on low-income folks. I mean, I can pay $1,200 to have my car fixed every two years, but a lot of people can't. And I'm tired of, I'm tired of WSSC. I'm tired of them damaging streets. I'm tired of the impact that they have on people.
Josh?
Just want to clarify the numbers. I think it would also be helpful for us to get a... I think it would also be helpful for us to get a magnitude for the city. So we have however many households, nine thousand or... So what are we talking about in terms of yearly, the total bill? And does that seem reasonable? I also have concern about the, not only the lowest-income people, but also middle-income homeowners and who are directly going to be hit by this. And I completely agree that this idea that they only give us partial rebate when they do a patch, I think is based on the idea that they're doing spot repairs here and there, not that they're going to tear up a big strip down the middle of the street like they did on Elm or Lincoln or Holly. So that, I think, definitely needs to be looked at, such that maybe they're responsible for actually bringing the street back to normal.
I'm sorry, if I might, just two things, I think, as you think about what should be in the resolution, it's helpful, and also it may be that we have testimony that accompanies it or some other written letter that accompanies it to WSSC, which either can be presented in person at one of the public hearings or in writing. So just for your consideration, as you consider your comments.
Yeah, as we got to voting on this, I was going to see if any of us were available to deliver some testimony at one of those two hearings, and I know that Suzanne would be only too glad to sign us up if that was possible. For the newer members of the council, I'm not sure how WSSC hearings work, but in many cases, at these types of hearings, government representatives get to go first. So if you do go, you may be up nice and early in the testimony rather than getting there early to sign up and hoping you're at the front of the list. You got a comment there?
Yeah, briefly, just an observation that the twenty-dollar fee sounds like a permanent fee. I don't see any sunset provision on it.
There's not been a sunset provision, there's no.
And I know that their effort is to replace infrastructure, but it's a utility, and I think that there's a water... Someone said to me the other day that water will be a big issue over the next ten years as we run out of it or as it becomes more scarce. So more than just a regressive tax or a regressive fee, if we want to save water, it makes sense to charge for the water we use as opposed to an ongoing fee with no sunset provision. So that's my comment.
Terry?
Thank you.
I, as I listened to this discussion here tonight, I wonder if maybe just reacting to their proposal isn't enough, that maybe we should invite WSSC to come here and talk to the city about how we can work together to address the needs in Tacoma Park in a better way and maybe in a different way than what their proposal is here, because I certainly think that if we're talking about a major renovation of the infrastructure of the water system within Tacoma Park, then we need to be talking about how can we work together so that the community gains the maximum benefit for the least price, and that includes not only the repair of our streets, but also, as Councilmember Clay said, the undergrounding of the other utilities.
And don't forget that the folks who live in brand-new areas of the county get to pay this, too. They don't even see some of the benefits, although you could say that they got a free ride on their new stuff. Any other comments? Are there any public comments? Have we moved the resolution? Would somebody like to move it?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Okay. Moved by Mayor Williams, seconded by Councilmember Ramos.
I don't think you're actually allowed to move a resolution as the chair.
Yes, he is.
Says the other rules of order.
Go back and read them.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
We may amend, Roberts. We can do that. We don't have to use strict, Roberts.
Were there any amendments, or do you want me to go with it this as it is and then work with people?
I think we go with it the way it is, and if we can come up with some additional points that we want to make, and if somebody is available to deliver testimony.
What dates are these?
The sixth and seventh.
Right. I should announce it for the television. The first one is Wednesday, February 6th, at seven-thirty PM in the Prince George's County Largo Government Center, and the second is Thursday, February 7th, at seven-thirty PM in the Montgomery County Council Office Building. And you can go to either one, but I would assume we'd go to the Montgomery County one.
And could we invite the highest representative from WSSC to come to this council meeting to discuss implementation within Tacoma Park? I think that would be a good idea. I won't be able to go to either one of those. It's the Maryland Mayor's Conference in Annapolis. So if anybody is able to go to WSSC, that would be good. Let Suzanne know.
Okay.
Okay, if you let me...
I'll check my schedule.
Okay, fine. Just let me know soon, because you do sign up in advance.
Okay. And we ask for public comment, I believe, but I'll double-check again. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we'll now move to item number four, which is first reading ordinance establishing a recreation committee as a statutory committee. And do we have a...
There is a corrected version that was being passed along the dais. As I was flipping through the packet, I realized that the last page did not get copied as part of the agenda packet.
So you want to look at the white copy, not the blue copy?
If you could look at the... That's correct.
Howard, would you like to make some comments?
I read it. It looks good to me.
Would somebody like to move it?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Barry, seconded by Councilmember Clay. Any further comments? Terry?
Thank you. I certainly support the recreation committee becoming a statutory committee. I think it's long overdue. My inclination coming to the night's meeting was to ask this decabled, because I think it makes more sense to discuss the overall way that the council deals with committees prior to forming a new committee, because I think many of the things that we might think about changing are things that are in this ordinance. But recognizing that that broader discussion has been set aside until the city clerks are able to join us, I'm more inclined to go ahead with this resolution we have tonight, but I do so, and I support it, but I do so with the caveat that I think some of these things might change when we talk about how we deal with the committees. So I don't want the power of the committee to feel like we're changing horses in midstream. We're kind of, you know, testing our horse first.
That's fine. We'll go with the floor.
Any other comments? Are there any citizen comments, public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The next item is a resolution authorizing the sale of city-owned property at eighty-four twenty-five Piney Branch Road. Sarah Daines is here to lead us off on this one.
As the mayor's indicated, the council is being asked this evening to consider a resolution authorizing the sale of property at eighty-four twenty-five Piney Branch Road. You may recall, this is a one-and-a-half-story brick residential property. The city purchased it in two thousand and three, I believe, excuse me, two thousand and two, with the intent of demolishing the property and erecting a parking structure. A decision was made that that project is not appropriate, and the council authorized the sale. We issued a call for bids in November, and we received four bids, and we're asking you to consider the sale of the property to the highest bidder, which was BuildCraft Inc., for the sum of one-hundred-and-six-thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Any comments on this?
Move the resolution.
Go here, second. Moved by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Snipper. Are there any comments by the council? My only one would be, hopefully, as we... No, I'll hold it. Nope. Any public comment? Back to Terry.
Mayor Williams, I think it might be helpful for the community to have appeal for some of the discussion when we did discuss this in the closed session, some of the discussion about the considerations that can be made between two of the bidders. Because the bid information is public information.
As Councilmember Siemens has indicated, there were more than one, more than one bid was received from the city. The lowest bid was a dollar for Habitat for Humanity, and there was some discussion at the council level in terms of whether or not the sale of that property to Habitat for Humanity, would it be an appropriate means of addressing some of the affordable housing issues that have been raised by the community and the council over the last couple of years. After some discussion, a tentative decision was made to sell the property for the highest bid and to allocate those proceeds towards a future and is yet undefined affordable housing program that the city would undertake. That issue is to be discussed at the city council at your next meeting, if I remember correctly, February 4th. So when we have that discussion next week, we'll actually have some resources, albeit limited in one sense of the word, to further some of the goals that you may identify during that process.
And the idea behind that being to kind of spread the resource around to a number of different properties or individuals and not concentrate it all in one.
Right. The building is of such a size that it would be most appropriate for a smaller household in a hundred-and-six-thousand dollars as a one-time investment. It may not be appropriate.
Dan?
At that meeting, I recuse myself because I know the man who is purchasing this house. He's a personal friend, and I'll just recuse myself on this vote as well.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor of the sale of the property, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Yes.
One abstention. The next item is second reading ordinance authorizing the FY-08 budget amendment number two. Barb?
Thank you. I did just want to note for the record and for the council's benefit that there have been some changes in the ordinance that is before you this evening from second reading, and I'll just take a moment to just highlight those changes. As I had mentioned last week under my report, the prior council had decided to appropriate ten thousand dollars for the conduct of focus groups. This was a request that had been made of the council by the Health Services Impact Committee, and the council had agreed to honor that request. That ten thousand dollars would be matched by a contribution from Washington Adventist Hospital, and I do have written confirmation of that pledge from Jerry Stotts. So the ordinance that is before you this evening shows the appropriation of ten thousand dollars from the unappropriated reserve to a contract account in general government, as well as the receipt of the funds from Washington Adventist Hospital as a revenue in the general fund. The other change that is before the council this evening would reflect the agreed-upon sale price for the city-owned property on Piney Branch Road, with Ms. Daines was just here to address. The budget actually contemplated a higher amount from the sale of that property, so there, in the ordinance, there is an adjustment in that amount. So I just wanted to highlight those changes. If there's any questions from the council, either on the matters I just mentioned or anything else in the ordinance, I'd be happy to take your questions.
Any questions?
I have a question. What's the flood mitigation assistance grant?
This is a grant that we were successful in receiving from, it's through the State Emergency Management Agency, Councilmember Clay, and it is a program that does have a required city match, but we have confirmed that we would be able to meet that requirement just through the dollars already allocated for the city engineer's salary. Ms. Braithwaite is in attendance, if there's any more specific questions that you have about that item.
No. The other question I have is that I didn't remember that we were going to split the cost of the Health Services Impact Committee request for the focus groups. I thought Washington Adventist was going to pay it, but apparently I remember that wrong.
Do you have a question, Josh?
No.
Okay. Any other questions? Any public comment? Seeing none, since this is second reading ordinance, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper?
Aye.
Councilmember Reddick?
Aye.
Did you think? There's been a question. Did we move and second that one?
No.
No, we didn't. Let's go back. Would somebody like to move that?
So moved, seconded.
Moved by Councilmember Snipper, seconded by Councilmember Wright. Okay, then I'll take the comment to make the comment I was going to make before on the other one and said, no, it's the wrong one. Now I've got my chance to make it before we do that again. And this is the place where, on these budget amendments, if the city manager could work up a little chart to go in the fiscal impact section of these with the, for the unappropriated reserve, the beginning of, the budgeted amount at the beginning of the year, all adopted changes, and the current amendment change, and then the balance at the end, so that we can track it on each one.
So you want to basically see every item that came out of the unappropriated reserve during this fiscal year? Just to make sure I'm clear on the request.
Yes. So it's just a, it's a little chart that you just add to through the year and put in the fiscal impact section as we do each amendment. Now, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaman?
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper?
Aye.
Aye.
And it takes many sets of eyes and ears to keep track of everything that's going on. Thank you, Councilmember Siemens. The next item is the consent agenda. Would any council member like to remove any item on the consent agenda? Councilmember Wright?
I would like to remove item D, which is the resolution providing for appointments in the Montgomery College Neighborhood's Advisory Committee.
Okay.
I think that's D.
D, sorry, I said D. I meant to say D.
That was D. Any other council reply?
I would like to remove item A.
Okay. So we try and put them on, but if we need to take them off, we take them off.
I would say that I'm genuinely very supportive and appreciate the mayor's efforts to put things on the consent agenda.
And we'll keep going this way until it doesn't work.
Great.
Okay. We're removing A and D. We'll discuss those after we vote on the consent agenda. So for the consent agenda, we need to move it.
I move.
Councilmember Snipper, seconded by Councilmember Siemens, and then we'll have a roll call on the consent agenda, and we might need to pause a second while she marks who moved and seconded before she calls the roll.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaman?
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll go to item seven.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll go to item 7A, and that's the single reading ordinance awarding a contract for tree maintenance. And the Public Works Director is here and maybe you can tell us a little bit about that one.
Sure. Let's see. As part of the ongoing tree care and maintenance issue in the city, a component of that is what we call maintenance pruning or hazard pruning. We haven't done a lot of it in the recent past and so we renewed our effort to address this issue citywide. The city arborist took a look at the tree inventory that was done by Davy Trees that the city had done back in 2000 and updated since then. And the basic components are to use that existing tree inventory data that identified areas that, of tree species that required maintenance pruning, more likely than others. Offhand, I'm blanking on the species of tree, but it'll pop into my head and I'll mention it when I recall it. So the idea is to begin a management program that deals with and addresses these issues. It is not necessarily an maintenance program that will specifically address some of the streetlight concerns that I know have been raised and we've been trying to work through with Pepco that we can join these two from time to time, but basically what this will be is to address issues of tree health as a, on a pruning program rather than strictly a light cone or streetlight-related issue, which I don't know if that's your concern or not. Oh, hello. Good. No problem. The other part of it, and Todd may want to jump in, is that we made the decision to split the contract award to multiple companies for a number of reasons, one of which is to try to maintain strong relationships with a number of vendors so that when we have an emergency need or we need an emergency response, we have some options rather than kind of a one-shot arrangement where we have generally dealt with one company.
Good feelings can count for a lot in a situation like that because if they know that they've worked for us and then they can come back and work for us after the emergency, they're more likely to work for us during the emergency rather than somebody that's giving them a cold call.
The other idea would be to speed up the process whereby we can have multiple contractors doing the work in various parts of the city at one time and make it more efficient for them. They don't have to travel citywide, they'll just have half of the city to address and the other company will have the other half of the city to address. And then the third is just to, you know, maintain a spirit of competition in terms of city contracts so that we're trying to make sure we're getting the best price for the city and a competitive price for the city in the tree maintenance work. I didn't know if you had a specific question related to that.
I do in fact have a specific question. It was my understanding that we had an existing contract with Adirondack?
Oh.
No?
We have no contracts with anybody.
We don't have any contracts with anybody. So who did we call out then when we had somebody we wanted to do?
Whoever.
We had used Adirondack quite a bit in the past, but we had no ongoing contract with them, no contract award. It was a case-by-case situation.
Okay. So here's the heart of my, the reason why I pulled it off. It seems to me like the city is very particular about its trees and, yeah, I had understood that we did have some positive relationships with other companies that you have called out and some not-so-hot relationships with companies that do business for utility companies that remain nameless. And so I guess my question is, by going to this method, which has been very useful to us in many cases where we catch a ride on somebody else's contract, are these people who are going to be familiar with the special nuances of doing business around tree pruning and tree conservation and tree support in Tacoma Park?
Yes.
Such that I won't be getting people calling me on the phone. So you know where I'm going with it?
Yeah, we're riding on the village and the town of Chevy Chase, which while maybe not as green, is probably at least as picky as Tacoma Park. I have tremendous confidence in Arbor Care. I went and inspected 12 of their trees and didn't see anything that I didn't like. The other company, Excel, works at the National Arboretum, taking care of trees at that federal facility, which is about trees. And I went out and looked at several of their sites in Potomac as well. And I'm fairly confident that they will do as well also.
Yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Terry?
Thank you. I, you say that, well, let me tell you what I don't like. You know, since the invention of a chainsaw and a pole, we see a lot more tree trimming than we used to see because it's a lot easier to do. My concern about this type of a contract, and aside from the vendors, and I trust your judgment on who the vendors are and whether they're going to follow certain rules, but to a certain degree, this type of a contract, the more they cut, you know, the more they get paid, the longer it takes the work to get done. And when I see the work that's being done, when I see the work that's being done along Sligo Creek Parkway, I see limbs that were in good health being removed that were there in good health last year, but now the locations no longer need to be appropriate. It seems like every year they go back and trim a little more and trim a little more, not only removing limbs that are, you know, diseased. And the other thing is that, you know, my understanding is that these open wounds are entry points for diseases and bugs too, so there's also some downside to the trimming.
There's a couple of things. Our contract will be hourly, so it doesn't matter whether they're working on one tree for five trees in that hour. Many of the contracts, Rockville, for example, does pay on a per-tree basis for both pruning and removal. If you're paying by hourly, they can take as long as they need to do a good job. That's one of the things I really inspected, especially the pole pruners. Somebody sets up the bucket and they cut this way and this way, as far around the trunk as they can get, and you end up with angled cuts rather than proper pruning cuts. And that's one of the things I was expecting, looking for. Did they move their bucket to be in the right place to make the right cut?
The first year, they're probably going to take the things that really need to be done, but then when you go back to the same neighborhood a second time, it's like, you know, you spend some time because if you come back and say, well, there were only three limbs that needed to cut, then I don't give many hours in. But if I cut a lot more limbs, then I get more hours.
We'll never be able to catch up. I won't be sending them back. We've got, including park trees, we've got 4,800 trees in the city that are mine to maintain. If I get 400 trees this year, I'll be lucky. So by the time we get back around...
It's 12 years.
12 years. We may go back to some trees more frequently because the ones I've selected to prune this year are your Norway maples and your silver maples, which are the ones that fall apart. And so shouldn't, I don't plant them, they shouldn't be planted in a residential zone. And so those I might have to hit every four to five years. Other than that, most of our trees won't get back the second time.
I just think this needs a lot of oversight and I trust you on that, but just, you know, something you can't go back on.
Right. When I'm in to do my annual report next month, I'll show you some of the things that, the methods that I've used to select the trees that we're working on and the descriptions of the work that I'm requiring. And, yeah, we'll see whether it works. We're not really starting out to work on the most valuable trees in the city.
Thank you.
Josh?
I'll just say really quickly, when I was out campaigning, although this didn't rise to the most critical issue, so I haven't talked about it frequently, I did hear a number of times that people felt like, as a city, we weren't doing a particularly great job of maintenance on our trees and, you know, the tree ordinance requires certain things of people. And then as a city, we were sort of, in some ways, people even use the word hypocritical in not doing the tree maintenance that we needed to do. So I'm very happy to see that we're moving forward with this and we'll be able to have the expenditure and the resources to maintain the trees in a way that you feel is appropriate. So.
Thank you. Given my past history, did we move this?
Move the ordinance?
Second. Moved by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Snipper. Any further discussion? Any public discussion? Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Barrett?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaman?
Aye.
Councilmember Sniper?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Reddick?
Aye.
Councilmember Sniper?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Okay, now, item 7D, resolution providing for appointments to the Montgomery College Neighborhood Advisory Committee. Josh?
Sorry, let me just get to the, my main issue is that there's three appointments that this ordinance is requesting be made. And what I would suggest we do is that we amend the ordinance so that the two members that, or the two appointees that have gone through the normal interview process, Mark Friedman and John Hannon, be appointed, but that the historic Tacoma designated person not be appointed at this point. My feeling about this is that the, there is a precedent set that when, in the few cases when either organizations or other committees have a member on that committee, they have the right to appoint that member. But it's not written into the city charter, it's not written into the bylaws. It's a precedent that's been acted upon and set up by previous councils. And since, although I know it's originally when I wanted to take this off the agenda, it was going to be next week that we discussed the committee structure and how we operate committees, I don't think it's going to be far into the future and I don't think it's going to prevent Nick Mack from being able to do his job. And I would like us as a committee, sorry, the council, to have discussions about how the committees are going to operate and precedents like this before we agree to do something like this. And if it were six months from now that we were going to have that discussion, I might have a different opinion, but fearing that it's not a week away, but might be two or three weeks away, I think we should hold off and have that discussion and deal with that appointment following that discussion.
So you're moving the resolution with that, one simple appointment struck from it?
Before you do?
Yes.
I had a discussion late this afternoon about one of the other appointments on here and my feeling was that we might want to move it with just Mark Friedman on it for the moment, that the other appointment is for a non-city resident and a point was made about if there's, that there's somewhere, and I don't know, because it was right before the meeting, that there's something that says if a committee member moves out of the city, that they have to resign from the city committee. So what about if people are already out of the city? How do you reconcile that? So I think that's part of that same discussion and we would need to do that at the same time. So if you want to move it with just the one name who there's no reason to hold back on and we can put that person on the committee, then we could do that.
I agree, yes, so we should move the ordinance with just Mark Friedman.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Wright, seconded by Councilmember Siemens. Discussion, Ruben?
Could you elaborate a little bit? Is there, do you have some concern about, I mean, what is the concern you have? Can you state sort of briefly what it is? Sure. I mean, my concern is that these are city committees and that the council should have, should weigh in on the appointments to those committees and that we shouldn't leave it up to a separate private unregulated organization to appoint members to city committees. So there's a second, it doesn't come up in this ordinance, but I would argue that we should discuss also, is whether organizations at all should have the right to specific seats on committees, because then that gets us into the job of deeming that this organization has the right and this organization might not. So those are the two issues I think we're going to need to discuss is, first is, should organizations have the right to have appointments onto those committees? And then if they do, what should be the process by which their member, you know, that designated seat is approved for the committee?
And if I can just add that one thing that I've heard suggested as a way to deal with that is that an organization, if they're going to put up members, might submit names just like the ABA does for the Supreme Court and then the council thinks. And, yeah, I'll leave it for that discussion. Any further discussion?
Did you have a, I mean, I'd love to hear if you had a, you seem to be contemplating something.
I am, but I think since we are going to have the committee, yeah, since we are going to have the committee discussion, it's probably better to have the whole discussion there. I was just trying to get a flavor for, so I had some idea why you were, yeah.
And I will add the thing I was going to say, which is, not to get into the substance of it, but the, one of the issues that I think we'll also need to discuss then is we used to re-interview people who were going to, who had been on the committee. We said, gee, we move to, we'll hear reports from the committee and in so doing, get the sense of where they are and what people are involved and therefore if they want to be reappointed, they don't have to be re-interviewed because they're part of that report back to the council process. And we'll need to discuss, is that working? Are the reports from the committees the kinds of things that are making that still a viable way to do reappointment? So, yes.
I just wanted to make one comment. If the amended resolution passes, I just want to make sure that the council understands we'll also be amending, deleting or amending the last warehouse clauses to be consistent with that direction because there's a reference to Ms. Barrett and also a reference to Mr. Hannon in the warehouse clauses.
Great. Ah, yes. So I think that was understood in the amendment. Okay. Okay. Did we get public comment on this one? Is there any public comment? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries. So we are now at item eight, first reading ordinance making technical amendments to the code with the rights of non-U.S. citizens in Tacoma Park. City Attorney Sue Silver.
Thank you. This, as you know, is a technical amendment necessitated by problems of preemption that the city needs to do certain things that are required by federal or state law, which we had not dealt with at the time we enhanced our sanctuary ordinance in October of 2007. As you know, this came up in a slightly different form on January 14th and I took concern, I did listen to each of your comments and have tried to work those into the new version of the ordinance that appears in front of you tonight. If you'll notice, we've provided a comparison between what was in front of you on January 14th and what is in front of you tonight. We've also provided the ordinance that shows all the amendments as against the standing ordinance. And the changes are as follows. First of all, we meet the concern that was expressed on January 14th, that we should list the specific exceptions that are being made because of preemption and we do that in this ordinance. The catch-all section, which is B5, is made more rigorously narrow. Basically, instead of just saying that it'll, an exception will apply where it's required by other kinds of law, it says now not only where required, but also where such requirements preempt this chapter, which is an additional fine. preempt this chapter, which is an additional finding that is made. The other main change is we provided a procedure so that there's no risk that there'll be a kind of secret, under-the-rock kind of preemption going on, concerns that, you know, things will come up and the public will know that the ordinance is being whittled away or diluted. Instead, whenever the city manager becomes aware of a law that may preempt the city's law, she will notify the city attorney, who will do the kind of legal analysis that is necessary to make a finding that there is preemption. And then the council will be notified that that's happened, and the city, that will allow the council, of course, to take action, either to amend the law or to allow that kind of exception to be made. And the city will notify the public if the council is going to make a finding of preemption, so that there's plenty of checks and balances, and this shouldn't happen in any way that isn't intended. But one other thing I wanted to say is that I've worked very closely on this with the Office of Attorney Eliza Dayton, who is here tonight and is available to answer any questions or speak to this ordinance as well, if you want her to.
I would like to move the ordinance.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Seaman, seconded by Councilmember Clay. Other comments? Carrie?
I would just like to thank you for all the work that you've put in in getting this to this point. And I know it was kind of a struggle over the last couple of weeks, but I appreciate the work that you did, and I think we have something we can support. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman. It's actually an honor to work on this kind of thing, and it was very helpful to work with Eliza.
Any other comments? Any public comments? No, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have it. And we will now take a short break and come back for our two work session items, the city manager's quarterly report, financial report, and discussion of budget format.
Already used our break for next week. And we're now at agenda item number nine, the City Manager's Quarter Report and Financial Report. Barb?
Thank you. For the benefit of those members of the council who are newer, I think this is the first quarterly report I've given since Councilmember Robinson and Councilmember Wright have joined the council. What I do on a quarterly basis, as it kind of implies, is give the council updates in three areas. One is the status of the city's general fund, both on the revenue and the expenditure side, and to basically advise the council if there's anything that we need to be watching, excuse me, or be concerned about. I also give the council an update on the, what have been the five priority areas that the council adopted in March of 2006. And then lastly, just sort of a general update on the programs and activities of the various city departments. In order to kind of keep us on schedule, Mayor Williams, I'll try to go through this relatively quickly, since the council has had the opportunity to read it. Ms. Brooks, the city's finance director, is in the audience as well, in case there's a question that comes up regarding the general fund report that I'm not able to answer. I guess in a nutshell, the, everything looks fine in terms of both the general fund revenues and the general fund expenditures. There are really virtually no areas that I guess, you know, Ms. Brooks, that I have any concern about. The one area that we are continuing to kind of watch is highway user revenues, as I indicated in the executive summary. There is a timing difference in terms of when revenues are received. Specifically, the payment that we typically receive in January was actually received in December in FY '07. So when you look at the comparisons from FY to, FY '07 to FY '08, it may indicate what looks to be a variance in the negative, meaning that we're running behind last year, which actually there is an explanation, which is just timing of when checks come in. And you'll see that a lot, particularly when you get towards the end of a quarter. Sometimes something will come in early, and sometimes it will come in a little bit later. And that can kind of make the comparisons between the two fiscal years look a little off. The one thing that we are watching, however, with the highway user revenues, is as Ms. Brooks and I have looked at sort of the payments, it does appear that we might actually be lagging a little bit behind FY '07, which is not what we projected in the FY '08 budget, and that those revenue projections are actually based on data that we get from the state. So I don't, I think it's a little too early to have much cause for alarm, but it will be something that Ms. Brooks and I will be watching as we get through the remainder of the fiscal year. Most of the other variance is on the revenue side. If there's anything that on the surface looks to be a negative or cause for alarm, it's just simply a matter of timing. So everything is pretty much performing as we thought it would be when we put together the projections last year. The one thing I did just want to note, which is a good news story, is as of December 31st, or the midway point through the fiscal year, we had already exceeded the budgeted amount for revenues from investment income. I think part of that is a function of higher interest rates, so we're able to get more return on our money. But I think it also speaks to the very close working relationship that Ms. Brooks has with our representative multi-bank securities. They had a change in personnel, and I think it's been someone that Ms. Brooks has enjoyed a very good working relationship with in terms of keeping in close contact about when money is going out and how long we can have money tied up in investments. And I think that's really, besides interest rates, that we don't have any control over. Sort of the name of the game when you're dealing with investment income is just trying to make sure you time your investments as closely as you can to your actual cash needs, and make sure you don't have money sitting idle that doesn't need to be. Yvonda, did I miss anything on the revenue side that you wanted me to note?
No, I think you covered everything.
Okay. I guess similarly, on the expenditure side, there's really no cause for alarm. I am in the process, this week and next week, of having my kind of mid-year budget meetings with the department heads, kind of looking for the remainder of this year to see if there's anything that they have concerns about that would cause them to exceed their budget. And we're also starting sort of the preliminary meetings on the FY '09 budget. As you probably had noted in both the report as well as the numerical summary, most of the departments in general are, when you look at it on a comparison basis, their expenditures are up. And that's really not surprising. As a service industry, most of our expenditures are going to be related to salary and benefit costs. Unfortunately, those generally tend to go in an upwards direction as opposed to going backwards. So you will note that most of the variances indicate that we have spent more this year than we did for the, as of December 31st of '06. There were a few departments where expenditures might have been down. That was specifically capital, and that's just a function of, you know, the timing of capital expenditures and what is actually budgeted. So that's one area that you'll tend to see a lot of variance as we go through the year. So I guess, as I indicated, just in summary, really no cause for alarm. Everything's kind of performing as we projected it would be and as we hoped it would be. But certainly, we'll be watching things as we always do on a monthly basis, just to see what's, what's happening. Any questions?
Ruben? Thank you very much. This was a very informative report. I am starting to hear concerns about increases in expenditures and decreases in revenues because of the possibility of a recession, as well as higher energy costs and changes like that that are. Do you have any sense whether it will affect the next six months, or is this something that won't really show up until the next budget year?
I think it's going to vary a lot from governmental entity to governmental entity, depending on where you get your money from, quite honestly. As a primarily residential community, most of our revenues almost half come from real property taxes. Obviously, there's a concern on the part of the residents in terms of their tax burden. But in this area, we're really not seeing assessments fall off, which you're hearing about in other parts of the metropolitan area. The council may have read, like in the Washington Post, particularly a lot of the counties get a lot of money from recordation fees, which I know has been an issue from the municipal league that we don't share in that. But since we do not get any of those taxes or fees, we're not really impacted by the slowdowns in terms of properties changing hands. So I guess that's sort of a good news, bad news. We're not being impacted by that, but we're not getting any money either. You know, the other area that is a major source of revenue for the city is income taxes. Obviously, there's been some changes at the state recently, more raising taxes on certain brackets of income. I don't know at this juncture that we expect any changes in that. You know, our income tax performance has always been very strong. I think if we've had any issue at all, it's just a challenge that Ms. Brooks and I have had in terms of doing accurate projections, which I think we share with many of our colleagues. I think last year, we had actually tried a different methodology, working with an economist who works for Montgomery County. And I know, at least I was pleased when we got the audited figures, to see we were very, very close to what she and I had actually projected for FY '07. The third area, and I think this is an issue that, you know, I do not expect that we'll likely see any increase in revenues for FY '09, is the tax duplication payments. One of the challenges that is before the task force is since we are still doing our work, as we have been asked by the county, is what the municipality's preference is. Do we want to have the formula applied for the FY '09 payments, or do we want to have the tax duplication payments held constant, which is what was done for this year. You know, I have my own opinion on that, but I think that's something that I need to work with my municipal colleagues in terms of making a recommendation to the county executive on that.
I think that's worth, there are two things worth calling out here, the points that you just made. The last one, that the tax duplication efforts that we had anticipated, that the committee that you're on would be back with its report by now, and that that's essentially been pushed back six months.
Right. We had actually started our work in May. I think we were, as I mentioned, I think in a prior council meeting, rather overly ambitious, thinking we were going to wrap this up in six months. I think, one, it's a much more complicated subject, and there were some, particularly some personnel turnovers at the county level, in the chief administrative officers' level, and it took a little while to kind of shake out through that process. But we are slated to try to complete our work and to get our report to the county executive in May of this year.
Right. So that, I know that there have been a number of issues that have come up in those committee discussions that could have some impact on us. And one of the ones that's out there right now with the soliciting opinions on the Piney Branch Pool is the fact that residents of Tacoma Park pay, I believe, about a quarter million dollars a year in the recreation tax to the county, and that we essentially get nothing back for that. And that, that has gotten people's attention and kind of renewed interest in, gee, wasn't there a TASD report, and what's happening with tax duplication? And so I think we need to be a little more proactive in letting people know some of the details of where we are with that, because I think they're feeling like nothing has been done. And in fact, that issue is being worked on, and we're trying to, through some efforts with MML, both at the county level and at the state level, looking for ways to get at revenue issues for municipalities.
Yeah, I actually had an email from the newsletter editor earlier today, asking if we should put a blurb or something in the next edition of the newsletter, kind of letting residents sort of know where we are in the task force process, if the council thinks that's a good idea. I could work with Jenny on that. One of the things that came up in, we have had a recreation subcommittee meeting, for those of us who do pay the tax and offer recreation services. And the figure I was given was just over $300,000 that Tacoma Park residents pay in recreation taxes.
Right. And the other issue is that, I guess I could say, in response to Ruben's question about some of the cyclical nature of revenues and expenditures, that as, as I've been on the council now in my 15th year, I've seen the counties go through these cycles. And when it's boom times, they're just moving along great, and they've got all these increases in revenues from, particularly from income tax and transfer and recordation. And gee, it's time to do all those projects that they haven't been able to do before, and everybody gets some money. And they seem to forget that if they take on more personnel, and they raise their full-time equivalents, then what are they going to do when they hit the down part of the cycle? And then everybody cries. And they, they have those swings, much higher and much lower. We tend to just kind of go along at a pretty even pace with a, you know, average increase to deal with basically wages and benefits. We don't really increase our full-time equivalents over decades. And we, we just kind of go along doing what we do with some flexibility to reassign staff to different areas within the same numbers that we have, to address particular concerns as they change. Revenues slowly creep up, expenditures slowly creep up. And in the, in the good times, for the counties, we wish we had a little bit of that ability to do some of those projects. And in the bad times, we're awfully glad that we're not in that cycle.
Yeah, I mean, I think you see it all across the metropolitan area. I mean, you know, I think we're all very familiar with Montgomery County and Prince George's County, but since I live in Northern Virginia, Loudoun County, Fairbanks County, I mean, all those counties are struggling in terms of what they're going to do with their budgets. They're facing similar shortfalls in the hundreds of millions of dollars. The other thing I would just mention, I think the council also probably gets the little news, kind of blurbs from MML. And I think one of the things that we will have to watch is, I think there was some, some suggestion that not only what we're seeing this year, but going forward, that there may be some reductions in highway user revenues. And at least what is proposed is that the program Open Space Funds would be severely gutted going forward. So I think that's just something we'll have to watch, as those funding decisions get played out in state legislature. But those are certainly some things that could impact us.
And there, and there's some bills in now that would provide a new source of funds for those municipalities who don't get program open space funds, either directly or passed through, through the county, trying to take care of that. And it may end up being that the folks who don't get it might get something, and the folks who do lose what they've got.
Yeah, if I recall, the Community Parks and Playground program seemed like it was fairly preserved. I think the other one that we always watch, going through the state process as they start dealing with difficult funding decisions, is Community Legacy Funds, which we have greatly benefited from over the years.
Yeah, I remember particularly, was it Hefner and Forest Park both got money from that.
Yeah, we've also got a lot of money through Community Legacy for the New Hampshire Avenue Revitalization. A lot of our three-state projects have been done with those programs, so.
Terry?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Barb for this report. I think it's very helpful, and I think it's nice and concise and easy to read. I'm just curious how often the department heads receive a budget versus actual technical report.
They have the ability, Councilmember Siemens, to run that for themselves automatically. It's just part of the financial software, so they don't need to be given a report. They can just run it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And if I can just add that, I know this is the format for the quarterly reports for a while, but this one seemed, I don't know, somehow more comprehensive.
In terms of the financial report?
The whole thing.
I would say the financial report, the executive summary, there was a lot, a lot more variances, quite frankly, to have to try to explain. But the rest of it, I think, is very similar, but I'll take the compliment anyway.
But it just, I just felt like it was a real good picture of where things were, and very helpful.
As I mentioned, and I'm not going to belabor it, there's information on each of the five council priority areas. I would just particularly like to express my appreciation publicly to Ms. Danes and her staff, who quite frankly, at least with the priorities that have existed the past two years with development in general, New Hampshire Avenue and affordable housing. Pretty much when I do this, if I can get my input from Sarah, quite frankly, I almost have my entire priorities report done, because so much of it is the work of she and her very excellent staff. And it's just always amazing to me how much work they get done with what is a relatively small staff. Sarah did ask me just to mention, call to your attention, it's under the, the New Hampshire Avenue section of the priorities report, that the staff is working with a graphic artist. We have been obviously working very diligently for the last two years on a variety of fronts to market the New Hampshire Avenue corridor. And one of the things that has been suggested is that perhaps there might be some type of special logo or branding associated with that marketing effort, and that's something that we're trying to get some technical assistance on. So we're kind of in the very early stages of that. Any questions about any activities related to the priorities?
Just a, it's a question that you don't need to answer.
Okay.
I've asked it before.
Okay.
And I know that the answer's probably going to be yes, soon.
Oh, I know which one it is. Is it the signage?
You got it.
It is in fabrication, Councilmember Williams.
And I'm thinking of both the gateway signage and the building signage.
They're both in fabrication. I can try to get an update from the two staff members that are working on that, and try to give you a tentative delivery date next week.
Thank you. Does the gateway signage include the wayfaring signage that's supposed to show people around Old Town and that sort of thing as well?
Yeah, there are some pedestrian kiosks that are included as part of this package.
I'd be interested to know what you find out in terms of the timing, because I think it would be nice and important to have that available as the weather gets nicer. You know, I'm hopeful the weather will get warmer sooner rather than later. As it gets warmer, that people...
Geez, does it ever get cold?
When people are walking around, they'll, you know, they'll be able to use the signage. I had a question related to the tax duplication task force. Understanding that the issues that you're talking about and discussing in there are sensitive, I ask if it might be considered that the council get an update on that a little bit more, with a little bit more color and understanding of the different portions of the task force, and how we're doing in closed session, if that's appropriate. I understand that it's obviously, there may be negotiations and discussions happening that wouldn't be, makes sense to share in public at this point. But I wonder if we could get a reading from the city attorney, if that would be considered okay for a closed session.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. And I would just, I guess this is just a general comment. I spend my position on the task force, and I think, as shared by my municipal colleagues, is that even if it appears we may have resolution on one issue, that we're sort of holding off until we see what the whole package is. Because I do think it's somewhat of a process of give and take, and trying to reach agreement on formulas that are, I think, both fair, obviously my interest is in municipalities, but truthfully also makes sense. And I think, in kind of quoting one of my municipal colleagues, who indicated that for his particular city, he might be willing to take a reduction in one area, but only if it meant that they were treated more equitably in an area where they haven't gotten anything. And so I think that's been part of the complicating process, is we have a number of pieces that are in various stages, but we need to sort of get all the various subcommittee work done and kind of... and kind of see where we're shaking out and see if the overall end result is something that everybody can live with. But yeah, I will talk to the city attorney, Councilmember Wright, and see what we can do.
And then my other question is a, I guess a rec programmatic question, which is, I'm just curious if there's been additional holla at me wrap sessions? I noticed that there was one, this talks about only one having been facilitated. This is on page 11. But I'd be curious if there have been other, it says it would be first and third Wednesday, if there have been other ones.
Yeah, I don't know the exact count. I can find that out from Ms. Hayden, but that is part of an ongoing effort.
Okay.
Obviously, part of, one of the things that we have really tried to focus on, you know, going back for probably the past year, is really looking at some of the teen programs and sort of targeting that age group, which has always been a little bit difficult programmatically.
Great.
I guess if I could, just a few other items I just wanted to kind of highlight.
Did you have a question?
I had one, this'll, I'm sure be easily answered, but on the general funds expenditure under recreation, the last item, it's $415,000 for the community center. Was that, is that it, operating the community center, to your knowledge?
It is. One of the things that would encompass, and I can get you a little bit more detail, but there's obviously divisions with the recreation department budget. It is primarily the staffing cost for this building in terms of the staff that works the front desk or that staffs the teen lounge or game room. It's also where any of the cost of the contractors, who may not be employees, but those who put on programs would also be encompassed. As well as a portion of the salary of some of the full-time staff that provides some guidance and oversight, but may not be directly involved in some of those programs.
Thank you.
I'm just in the general priorities report, I think just kind of in keeping with some of the discussion earlier this evening, is several of the council members mentioned under council comments, and I think not surprisingly, the concerns of their constituents in terms of crime happening in the city and some of the recent upswings. Just obviously means a lot of vigilant work that needs to be done by the police department. But I would just comment, this is on page seven, I think, just to give a kudos to Chief Ricucci, is during the, he's been here almost a year, he'll celebrate his year anniversary next month. But one of the initiatives that he put into place was the tactical enforcement unit to be, to have a mechanism where the department could respond to different crime trends as they arose. And this was initiative of his as part of sort of an organizational restructuring that he put into place, I believe about four or five months into his tenure. And I just think it's very noteworthy that this team, certainly in cooperation with the investigative staff as well as patrol, but has really just done a tremendous job. And I think, as he noted, had made 21 arrests, 22 state citations, 15 field interview reports, basically covering a very wide range of crimes, including a lot of very serious controlled substance dealing. So I would like to just publicly express my appreciation to Chief Ricucci and his staff, I think, for some of the fine work that they have done. As I mentioned, I think there's still an awful lot of work to do and we're certainly very sensitive, I think, to the concerns of the residents with what we're experiencing. The last thing I would just like to mention, and this is just kind of a follow-up, I think, to the council's green night on Tuesday night. And earlier, I guess in 2007, the International City County Management Association, I think much like this council, started having some discussions about sustainability and actually did form a sustainability advisory committee to the Board of ICMA. I was asked to be a member, I think probably in large part due to Tacoma Park's very long history of interest in green issues. And I know that the council will be talking about priorities on Thursday evening. One of the discussions that we've had on our advisory committee, and we have members from all across the United States, one from England, one from Australia, and one from Canada, because ICMA is an international organization. And I have some materials I may try to put in your boxes later this week. But when we talk about sustainability, it is really not just about environmental efforts. It's really sustainability in a very broad sense, including, I think, you know, one of the hallmarks is sort of social equity, environmental initiatives, and also fiscal sustainability. And as we talk about kind of what we should be advising the Board of ICMA and trying to provide assistance to local governments, we sort of view those things as being in harmony. There are some tensions, but that you really need to be looking at sustainability very broadly. And I think as the council looks towards your priorities Thursday evening, I would encourage you to look at sustainability in that same way. And one of the things we talked about in a conference call Thursday afternoon is that we are looking to encourage the ICMA board, very much like the performance measurement initiative that was undertaken a number of years ago, is to actually develop a kind of a model sustainability management system that would basically have some suggested performance measurements and that it would probably be a multi-tiered system recognizing the fact that there are different resources available to different sized governments and that there probably just wasn't a one-size-fits-all model. So that is something that we are working on. The committee will probably have a two-day retreat sometime in March, which as long as it works with our budget process, I plan to attend. So I do think there's an opportunity as an organization and as a community that we work towards sustainability, that there's also a lot of other local governments that I think we can sort of piggyback off and kind of learn together. So like I said, I do have some materials, both from the committee as well as some sessions I've attended at ICMA, and I'll try to get those to the council.
And I would encourage you to make our budget schedule work so that you can attend those two days.
I'm hoping I have it on my calendar. Anything else?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Then we can move on to our last item on the work session agenda, which is discussion of budget format for the coming budget. And hopefully, we all got a chance to look at the FY08 budget that the city manager put together with some additional information, trying to address some of the concerns. And I know we have additional concerns, issues, questions about both the, what the proposed budget looks like and the timeframe for it. Did you have anything you wanted to start with, Barb, or you want us to start with our questions?
You can take it away.
Terry, you want to go first?
Thank you, Buzz. Or Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you. First, I, Ms. Matthews, I would like to thank you for the budget. I've noticed that since you've been with the city every year, the document becomes more attractive and has more meaningful content. And I appreciate that. I think it's well organized, it properly puts the emphasis on staff costs, because that is the vast majority of the expenses that we incur. And I appreciate the changes that you've made this year to basically suggest better ways for this council to review the budget, or the material that we have here to review it. I also appreciate Mayor Williams that the council is considering what we, the council would like for this upcoming budget cycle. As I run through my suggestions, I hope you all remember that I'm not an accountant and I may not use the right terms, and my ideas may not float and we continue with the discussion.
You'll be going towards good terms as long as you don't say forensic audit.
I think I learned my lesson on that, thank you, even though it was accurate. I think the budget is absolutely the most important function that the council performs. It's a planning tool that establishes the direction for staff for the year. I would like us to use a strategic planning approach for the budget. If we're more clearly, if we more clearly define what we hope to accomplish, we can better decide which expenditures are the most important to us when we have to start cutting things because our desires are greater than our pockets. I'm concerned about how much we can transform the budget process this year because we have so little time between now and when the city manager is going to bring the proposed budget to us. So if we make radical changes at this point in time, it may be difficult for her to prepare the budget in a timely manner so that we can get the budget approved before the end of June, which we have to. But basically, what I'd like to see is that I think we should include a vision and mission statement for the city and also for each department. I think that many of the deficiencies that I see in our government result from a disconnect between my vision and what city staff seem to be operating under. I'll give you an example. I think Tacoma Park should operate more like a small town than a larger bureaucratic city, but yet when someone walks or calls into the recreation department and asks to reserve a room in the community center, they're often told that they need to send an email to reserve a room, they can't just do it as walking in. And that, I think, reflects more of a bureaucratic approach to operating the city government than what you would expect to find in a small town. And I think that we are of a size that we could have a more friendly customer service. Secondly, I think the council should establish goals for each department. And I'm not talking about the priorities that we're going to be talking about later this week, but I think that we should be agreeing to what the goals are for each of the departments and not just new initiatives. Thirdly, I think I would expect staff to write objectives then for each of those goals for the council review and approve. And of course, with each goal, goals should be, I'm sorry, the objective should be measurable and so the measurement criteria should be defined by the city staff and again, reviewed and approved by the council. And finally, to the greatest reasonable degree, each project or program should be a budget center. And again, maybe I'm using the wrong word, but for example, I think the revenues and expenses should be shown for each recreation program so it's easier to decide which programs are worth the resources. When implemented, we would need a new time reporting system so staff can accurately record their hours for each of these budget centers. Other improvements that I think we're needing, that we need in addition to changing the way we do the budget is the time reporting system that I mentioned. And I think it's important to talk about that now before we do budget because that would be a budget item this year to procure that and transform over to a new time reporting system. I also would like the city to look at a new accounting software. And there are now some integrated packages that are becoming available in the market, such as the GovMax program that integrates the accounting software with the time reporting systems and some other aspects of the government's bookkeeping. And then thirdly, I think we should look at updating the chart of accounts. The chart of accounts that we use now has been, I think, in place for a number of years. I think that we've heard from our finance director that there are some opportunities we would like to, it would be nice to take advantage of. And I think that this is the time we should start talking about doing that. There. Short and sweet, thank you.
Thank you. Who else has come through? Ooh, Hannah.
I didn't copy.
Yeah, and a city pin. Make us work. And now that you've gone this far, you better finish. Somebody down there is going to complain they didn't give personal service.
This came out of some thinking I've been doing about our budget, as Terry obviously has, Councilmember Siemens has also. And I first want to say that I do appreciate a lot the improvements in the budget, just as Councilmember Siemens says. The budgets have, I have read these budgets of Tacoma Park at various points. This one is much better. But I think there is an improvement that we could slowly move to in our budgeting process, which actually is pretty similar to some of the things Councilmember Siemens was talking about. And that is something that's in the, you know, you shouldn't, should never give these kind of things to policy wonks like me because I actually read these books, the Handbook for Maryland Municipal Officials. And in it, it talks about performance-based budgeting. And as you can see, there's a little, I lifted a little quote from there, but basically, the idea of performance-based budgeting is to follow up on what Councilmember Siemens was talking about and elaborated a little bit, which is that for each activity or function that we do, program, activity or function, you describe it and identify it so you know what it is that you're talking about. Then you include what are often called the resources or inputs for it, that is, the people, money, and equipment that go into it. The outcomes are things that you want to accomplish, and those are written down. And then some kind of measure of how well you did whatever that activity was. And the kind of goal here is to be able to weigh whether what we are doing is probably working, because we'll have an outcome measure that says people are satisfied with it or it was well done. And the second is, it will, the second thing it will allow us to do is to weigh two different activities. Do we want to spend, you know, $200,000 on this and $300,000 on the other one? We'll be able to say, well, we like this one better than the other one. It'll be a way of lining up what we do with our priorities and with performance. This is a major change to do this kind of stuff. I've seen it done elsewhere and would require, you know, quite a bit of change in how the city does things, including stuff like Councilmember Siemens was talking about. We might need to have new software and training for staff and so on. So my thought on this was to roll it out slowly, to do something, a couple of them in each department. I call it the low-hanging fruit. You find the easiest ones to do first so that people gain experience doing it, they understand what its pros and cons are and kind of phase it in that way. This is a standard thing. I talked to the city manager about this, something that, you know, cities do, as indicated by the handbook. And I, what you see on most of this page are some examples of actually doing it. And the key thing is, if you had this, if the council had it in front of us, then we could decide whether, you know, two FTEs was the right number of FTEs. We could decide whether the performance measure was what we wanted to measure. We would also see a description of the program and activity and therefore, we could evaluate a little bit about what's, what the departments are doing with that money and staff. So I think it would help, I think it would help the city council and the public. And I've seen it elsewhere used as a tool by the manager because, of course, each department gets to watch their own, their own performance-based budgeting and see how it goes. So that's essentially my proposal, is to put that, put that in. And the last thing on the end is, we hardly ever have new programs, so maybe this is pie in the sky, but for me, for the future occasion when we do have a new program or activity, I would like to see a different presentation of that. And you can see what I have in mind for that. It's a kind of one-pager thing that I think of that gives you the goal we're trying to achieve, some background, why we think this will work, estimates of cost and people and similar sorts of estimates, how implementation would work, including timetables. And then what are, as I indicated earlier, some kind of performance standards that would have to be met to help us judge whether this activity or program or function was working. And if we had that as part of each new function, then that would give us a way to And if we had that as part of each new function, then that would give us a way to discuss it and evaluate it better. And I'll stop there.
Colleen.
Well, I, in the interest of our new method of not reviewing things too much, I'm going to say I agree with almost everything that Terry said. He lost me at the point where he started talking about specific software because I can't agree with that because I really don't know anything about that. And I agree with everything that Ruben said. And, you know, particularly, this model of being able to split out the more specific activities, relate them to an actual cost and an income from the program, and what those outputs are. I think that's critical to having the budget process be something more than kind of a rubber stamp, essentially. And that is what I have felt like the option has been the last two times I have engaged in this is to, is, it's almost been a yes/no process and not a real conversation about the budget, what we're spending money on, what that means for what it is that the city provides. Now, last time when I asked for more information, people suggested that I wanted to count the number of paperclips that the city was buying, which isn't the case. However, I will say that I found the line item budget, if you'd call it that, that we received at the very end of the process last year to be fascinating, both in the information that were smaller items that we paid for and larger items that we paid for. I was, there was a very small line item for cellphones for the library, which I thought was fascinating. And there was a very large item for staff, what was it called? Staff, I think it's about the staff, the staff days that are held, staff appreciation. And I thought that that was, those were both interesting things, and, you know, they raised questions about expenditures and things that I would like to be able to ask questions about, but didn't really have the information prior to that. You know, I think this is critical to us being able to be effective, effective in our role as, as council members in terms of really providing public, the oversight of these, of these public functions and fulfilling our, our role as ensuring that, you know, public trust and, and good government. And I think that this, this is all critical. So I would hope that we could implement more of this sooner and be able to use the budget process also to direct new things. And Ruben, I, Councilmember Snipper, can be more proper than I. I think we have actually implemented a lot of new items. We have a whole new team program, and, you know, we've expanded the senior program. I was one of the people who participated in the new program from Public Works where they had the group purchase of the trees. Some of those things that paid for themselves, like I believe that the tree piece mostly paid for itself, and some of the things which are, you know, significant costs, there are significant costs associated with the city, but, but when we make these decisions, there's, you know, we're not really being able to participate in that way. So.
Josh.
Or, in the spirit of this evening, Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. I have three, I have five things, but three of them, or two of them have already been touched on, and I just want to agree and add a little, a few additional points. I think the detail that Councilmember Clay talked about is incredibly important. As council members, we should be able to drill down to as much detail as we want. And if we have the right accounting system, it is very easy to be able to look at the numbers at a high level and then expand down and look at a very detailed level. And some council members may want to do that in certain areas and may not in other areas, but we should be able to look and see at a very detailed level what the money's being spent on. That's, I agree with Councilmember Siemens, that's one of our major responsibilities to, around accountability. The second is the measurement and cost accounting. I, I lumped the, the cost accounting that Terry first mentioned and then the measurement that, that Ruben mentioned in the sort of two, the same bucket. It's part of the same piece. And I'm very, very supportive of that idea. I think it will give departments focus. And as, as important as it is, you know, to say what we're going to do, it's more important to say what we're not going to do and what people shouldn't be doing and spending time on. I think we have to be careful there because the devil's in the detail when you undertake a project like that. And I'm very, I like Councilmember Snipper's idea that we start with some easier ones at the beginning, some low-hanging fruit. You have to be careful that you don't spend so much time and money on measuring that you don't get anything done. We're not, we're not a huge government entity or a huge corporation, so we have to just balance those, those two things. The other large issue is just the timing. I think, I would like this, to see us start this process sooner rather than, than later because I think we're going to learn as we go along, and it's going to be iterative. And I'd rather not feel like I would have done to my head on July 1st and have to vote for something. And then two more, my neat things is, they may have been in here, and this is my first deep studying of this, but I thought it'd be very helpful to have two things broken out. One is a clear accounting to understand the things that we're doing and how much we're paying for them related to those activities and how we're supposed to be paid by other government entities for them, specifically the rebate. So if we're providing police service or we're providing road maintenance, what's that costing us and what are we getting rebated for? So we have a sense of what we're putting in as a city to accomplish that task. And I think that would be helpful also because it will, the whole tax rebate situation is a hard one for people to, to understand at the, you know, the individual voter and citizen level. Not that many people are going to read through the entire TASD report, so I think that would be helpful. The other breakout, which I, I think City Manager Matthews made a very good point on page 11 in her report, which is about what she calls non-reoccurring expenditures. So sort of special projects versus the reoccurring expenditures that we basically sort of have to make to keep the city running. And I, I think it would be very helpful to have those two things broken out and to be able to understand, sort of, to me, it's sort of, one is, let's run the ship, and the other is changing the ship. And I would want to know that, you know, the, the non-reoccurring are more sort of the change projects. How do you improve things? And, and I'd want to know the balance of what we're spending on each of those, but also, when we are dipping into the, the reserve fund, are we truly dipping in for those non-reoccurring? Or sometimes are we a little bit, not careless, but do we get a little bit overeager in what we want to deliver in the sort of reoccurring and dip into that, and that may not be fiscally possible in the long term?
Councilmember Barry.
Yes. It sounds like there are a number of colleagues who are quite interested in a fairly substantial overhaul of the way the budget is done and the way the city is managed. And I would, I'd like to point out just a couple of things to think about, especially as we go into our planning session on Thursday. And there does seem to be two concerns surfacing. One might refer to as the scrutinizing of line items and the other outcomes and measurements. As to the first, it sounds like a lot of this data has been made available in the last year or so. The fact that we can now find in the budget a line item about cellphones used by the library and charged to the city suggests that that information is there. There may be a bit more of it, but it is there, and any of us can challenge that expenditure anytime by asking questions about why and the value of it. And I hope people feel free to ask those questions. On the other side of it, some of this information too is available. Just in looking over Barb's budget, I see that there are a lot of, there's some performance objectives there already. They may need some tweaking and some adding to, but I think a lot of that information may be there already. I would, though, point out an experience that I've had just in the last several years at my workplace where we have implemented something called a balanced scorecard, which is really a sort of performance outcome management approach. And it's taken us three years to implement the thing, and we're still not quite there yet. It's, it's a long, laborious project in which hundreds of people are spending hundreds of hours. It takes a long time, and the, the outcome is somewhat questionable as to whether we have really achieved a great deal from that exercise. So I would, I would caution, and, and I do appreciate the use of the words slowly rollout because these things are expensive to do in terms of staff time and software acquisition, changing accounting systems. These are major, major undertakings that would, would have to happen on top of an already busy staff that is quite engaged in, in providing the basic services to people. So I, what I might just suggest for the purpose of discussion on Thursday or sometime after that is to take a department as a kind of pilot project and work together with them to identify these things during the course of a fiscal year, experiment with it, make sure that the city staff is fully involved in identifying the objectives that they feel are useful and, and helping to identify the measures for it, study it very carefully, and then see where it can be improved, and then look at another department that it could be rolled out to in a subsequent fiscal year. Also, if push comes to shove, I would rather focus the energy of the city on the spending side of the equation and, or sorry, the revenue side of the equation, and try to resolve as quickly as possible the, the issues that were raised by the TASD committee and that we're now in the process of negotiating with the county, and, and save the, the issue or the concerns on the spending side until we have resolved the, the still open question on the, on the revenue side. So just to recap, take it slowly, otherwise, the whole thing could collapse. It would be potentially disheartening to the city staff and try to seize upon, you know, one modest project for the year coming up and, and test it carefully to see how it would work in reality, and don't abandon the important effort that's underway now in order to generate some additional revenue from the county.
A lot of what you, Councilmember Barry said, I, I really agree with. I, I've been working for a couple of years with a kind of a hybrid government entity that instituted something called the High Performance Leadership System. And there are measures, and you try to track whether you're meeting those measures, and there is reporting back and forth. And this, this bureaucracy with a pretty limited scope has somewhere between 40 and 60 measures that they're trying to follow. And there's a lot of, a lot of thinking about what the measures are and how do you measure them and how do you report back. It takes an awful lot of time, and my fear would be that it would kind of cut into our flexibility, although I think it's a valuable effort and a, and a good direction to go. I, I think the flexi, keeping flexibility and listening to our staff is very important. How, because they're the ones who have to, in the end, do the work in some way or another. I'm also a proponent of not being afraid to envision hard times because we are going into a recession and although we're, as our city manager says, we're somewhat insulated, which is great. Mayor Williams, you've said that we kind of just cruise along. If we're going to achieve a goal of cutting our use of energy in this world by 40% or 50% or 60%, which the scientists say is what's necessary to, to minimize the loss of other species, it's going to be expensive, and we're going to have to make hard choices. And if we're going, entering into a recession at the same time we're trying to make these hard choices, we have to work and organize ourselves as if we're going to have to make very hard choices. So no one likes to make those hard choices, and that's why keeping camaraderie and sense of accomplishment up and keeping the staff happy is important. So whatever tools we implement, those are the kinds of things I'm, I'm going to pay attention to.
And I would just add that, I would say I would generally agree with Councilmember Barry's comments. I think there are some areas where we need some more information, we need to feel like we've got a handle on where we're going and what we're doing, and I think in some of those areas, staff may welcome some, some clear direction from the council on what it is that we're trying to accomplish. But for us to give that clear direction, we need some more information so that, to the extent that there are some departments or some areas that, that's true, I think we need to find the best way to get that information. I think there are many departments that are running pretty well, and the limited staff that we have is doing an awful lot of work. And if we try and put a whole bunch of new tasks on them in terms of kind of accounting for what they do, they're, they, there's the danger that they may get a whole lot less done. To the extent that some of this falls under micromanagement, I don't want to go there, but I think we, as the council, need some flexibility to figure out what those areas are, where we do need the information, and do want to make some, some changes. And I like the start small, go slow approach. I don't see that as, as a, as a way of trying to do something and derailing it at the same time. I think we, we do need to go there with some purpose. I think it'll be up to us to decide some of the particular areas that we might want to focus on or start with. But I, I don't want to, in the process, drive the staff crazy with, with additional requests. And I don't, I don't want to head down a road toward procuring new tools to get different information without understanding what the capabilities are with the existing tools that we have. It may be that one thing that's helpful is that, to the extent that the staff is able to drill down with existing financial software to find out some information, it could be that some council members might want to have that ability to look at some things in particular areas, understand what it is that our capabilities are, and come up with some suggestions in particular areas based on that. I know that every once in a while, I recall that it used to be that the council would get the monthly financial printout with all the information that was about three-quarters of an inch thick, and it inundated our recycling buckets. And we, we said, no, no, please stop. And to the extent that we can get that either in a paper form or in electronic format with going into the, having access into the network via VPN or however that might work, that might be a way of getting some of the additional information. And I guess at this point, I don't know to what extent the city manager might want to respond to anything that's been said, whether now or by another method in the near future.
Not sure where to begin. I encourage Ms. Brooks, if she has anything that she'd like to add. You know, I think certainly my goal as your city manager is to try to give you, you know, information that you feel you need to do your job. I guess in, in listening to some of the comments, I think there is a balance between the council sort of exercising kind of your oversight responsibility. sort of exercising kind of your oversight responsibilities and setting policy and not feeling like it's your job to have to dig into, and I'm, Councilmember Clay, I'm not picking on you, but I'll answer your question. The library cellphone is because all the members of the management team have a cellphone so I can get ahold of them. I mean, that's a simple question. And I think the danger that I've seen in some cities, and I'm not suggesting would be the case with this council, but sometimes it's very easy, I think, rather than dealing with some of the overriding policy objectives and some of the, I think many of you used the word tough calls, is that you can get into looking at a single line item and really focusing on the minutia because that's the part that for all of us is easier to get our hands around than the broader policy issues. And so, I guess as we talk about what you want to see in the budget document, I think that's probably more of a concern of mine than anything else, is that we don't get so bogged down in the details that we're not moving forward on what the overriding policy directions are. You know, what I would hope to get out of Thursday evening, I guess, is a clear sense of what this council's priorities are. I do think that many of you have made comments in terms of wanting to move forward in a number of areas, but I think recognizing that there are fiscal constraints to doing so. I think what I, I think I've heard ever since I've been here and certainly took away from the survey as your city manager, is there's a very strong concern on the part of our residents about their tax burdens. So, what I'm going to try to do, at least with the sense that I have of some of your priorities, is to try to give you some information going into your priority session, at least from my perspective, are some steps we can take to achieve those goals, but also to provide you, I think, as I've always tried to do in my almost four years with the city, of what the fiscal consequences of that are. You know, I think, Councilmember Wright, I would just answer a question I think you had. In the budget document, one of the things that I tried to do with this is to point out where revenues for each department were coming from and what the impact on the general fund was. So, if you look at the general departmental pages, there is a source of funds for each department, trying to get to exactly that issue because I think it is kind of at the heart of what our residents want to know, is how much are they actually paying for certain services? And hopefully can give you all some guidance as a council of kind of what stays and what goes. I think in terms of budget formats, and Councilmember Snipper and I had a conversation, I think, a month, six weeks ago. I actually, as some of you know, got my start working in budgeting. That was my first job after my management training program in the city of Kansas City, which was kind of one of the forerunners, I guess, of doing performance-based budgeting. I think the challenge that I've seen in most of the cities I've worked in have had some form of it, is what do you measure and why are you measuring it? I think very often in many cities, what you do is you count things because you need to do performance-based budgeting and workload measures, truthfully, to get the GFOA Distinguished Budget, a Presentation Award, it's a requirement. But my hope would be that as I come away from the priority session, I'll get a good sense of the direction the council has in terms of what success is in each of those areas and we can kind of work together to do some performance measurements. I will say that I've been in local government now for more years than I care to count, coming up on twenty-two years in May, and I've never seen a city, or quite frankly, a financial software system that is going to drill down, I think, to the level that I've heard some of you talk about. Because literally you could end up with, literally thousands of activities that local governments even of our size engage in, you're literally not going to have enough chart of accounts or subaccounts, you know, which I think you tend to see is groupings of activities. So, you might see, I'll just pick one, senior recreation programs or youth recreation programs or art-type programs, but you're not going to see Pottery 101 and Murals, you know, it just doesn't happen. And I just don't think that that's probably feasible, either from a practical basis in terms of what type of financial software may be available. And in the absence of having something that automatically can generate that kind of information, then I think what you'd be asking your staff to do is track, doing a lot of manual tracking of records. So, I think as we kind of talk about what it is you want us to, what data we want to capture, I guess the only thing that I would say is that I think it needs to be something that can be readily tracked automatically because I don't think there's anything worse than sitting there and having people have to track things pen and paper. In saying that, I don't think that's necessarily an indication that there's a failure of the city's financial software system. Worked with a whole bunch of them. As an assistant city manager, oversaw a million-dollar software installation citywide, including, you know, nine-one-one systems and financial software and all that. There is no perfect system. And I certainly would probably defer to Ms. Brooks more than anyone else, I think, in terms of kind of what is needed because that's sort of her bailiwick. And I'm not going to sit here and say Panamation's perfect. She and I have had some discussions about that. But having overseen a total migration of one city's software, I can't remember which of the councilmembers said it, or many of you did, I cannot even begin to tell you what a tremendous undertaking that is and the impact, I think, in terms of just day-to-day workload things. It literally is a multi-year process, I think, as many of you alluded to. And I think if that's the direction the council wants to take, I think there probably needs to be more extensive discussions with Ms. Brooks in terms of co-assessment of the financial software and what the actual consequences of that are going to be. Because it truly bogs down any organization, but particularly when you're as small as we are and you have people wearing multiple hats, it's extremely challenging. I look back on that time as an assistant city manager with total horror, quite frankly, in terms of what it took. You know, I think the other thing, which is probably not a discussion necessarily we need to have tonight, but I know Councilmember Siemens and I, I think, have had some discussions about kind of time-tracking systems. You know, I would note that, once again, I think I would probably need to have a clear understanding of what is the question that we're trying to answer by going that route. I think one of the limitations of any system that's going through payroll and that's almost inevitably how those systems are tracked, is depending on what you're trying to get at, those systems are very weak when you're starting to try to capture what work is done by your exempt employees, which is obviously myself, your entire management team. If those systems go through payroll, I'm paid forty hours a week whether I work forty hours a week or I work sixty hours a week. So, there's always going to be some component, particularly for your management employees, that those time-tracking systems just don't address. Because all our hours aren't being tracked through payroll, just from the fact that we're an exempt employee under the Fair Labor Standards Act. So, I think I've got some information. I'll kind of try to process it a little bit more, but I guess those are sort of some of the initial thoughts. I guess Yvonne does anything that you can think of that you'd like to add?
I think you covered most of my concerns.
If I can just add that, I think, to the extent that we get too deep into the weeds, we bog down the staff and we bog down ourselves, if we're concerned about spending too much time up here, we need to focus on the areas that does, that do need more of our attention, greater level of detail and not kind of have the broad brush stroke on it and get too deep into it with all of them. We just need to find that balance for the areas where we do need some more information and some more level of detail and work on that and not let us, not let it carry us away into driving ourselves and staff crazy.
I mean, I think one of the challenges, and I'll just add, and I certainly would welcome any input this evening or even individually, is, you know, I really, the budget document got out very late because, truthfully, I was trying to process a lot of the input I got from the prior council and trying in my own mind to wrestle with what was going to answer those questions or at least come close to it. Part of the process in terms of some performance and workload measurements is that, truthfully, I wasn't trying to make the department heads go back and dig through reams of paper because I hadn't asked them to be counting something. So, I do think there, you know, we tried to think of things that we thought might be meaningful to residents. I think one of the things, I think, I know Councilmember Clay has looked at the Rockville city budget. If this council makes a commitment to doing resident surveys on a periodic basis, if you take a look at Rockville's budget, there is a tremendous amount of their performance measurements that is based on a commitment to doing surveys every two years. That's obviously not something I control, that's something this council controls, but you know, that's certainly something I think we could look at. But, like I said, I welcome your input in terms of what you want to see with those measurements. I know I did get some questions kind of offline and I would just mention, workload measurements are going to be the type of things you see in terms of the number of payroll checks that finance processes. Truthfully, they don't seem very intriguing, but they are designed and they are part of the kind of the generally accepted standards in terms of budgeting when you're doing any type of measurements, is to try to give the council and the public an idea of also volumes of work and a sense of the activities that are going on in any particular department. So, that'll shut up.
Three years ago, when I was on the TASC committee, we asked a question about recreation related to the, to New Hampshire Recreation Center. And the question was, what are the percentage of folks who attend these programs that are not residents of the city? Which I think is a really basic piece of information that we should be able to get. And the burden on the recreation director to go back and get that information was significant. It took her a long time to get it, not because I think she was ignoring us or, you know, but because it's an onus compilation of information. You know, one of the reasons why I said I supported most of what Councilmember Siemens said is because I'm not interested in having a federal-level, outcome-oriented, performance measurement system. I mean, I would be happy with counting attendees in the beginning or in the first year, just getting some good baseline counts. I'm not as interested, I'm not sure I'm interested in a time accounting system at all. I'm interested in a situation where we say, you spend ten, you know, ten percent of your FTE goes to recreation management or twenty percent goes to financial management and just letting it go at that and once a year, you know, on an average week, kind of checking in to make sure that that is in fact how it goes. I don't think that we need to have a giant system like that, but I do think that we could do better. And, you know, one of the things that led me to ask for the line item piece also was because what happens is we do add programs and we don't go back and delete much. And so, for example, when we asked at the end, I can't remember if it was last year or the year before, for some suggestions about things that we cut, we got four or five things on the list and they were all council, top council priorities. That's what came back to us. And I think that either we need to or you need to have a way to do some comparison of programs and we should have some measures for what those are. And so, we talked about the recreation department a lot. So, for example, we might have a standard that there's some, some cost recapture for certain kinds of programs, like maybe adult programming would have a hundred percent cost recapture. And that would include staff overhead or not, maybe wouldn't for residents, but if it was a non-resident, it would include our staff overhead like you and our building overhead as well. But if we were running programs for kids, we might have a couple of different pieces where, you know, we had a scholarship program or not. And we still have the cost recapture, but we set aside funds, essentially, our own funds, that we would cover the costs for low-income kids. Or we went with a policy where, you know, it's just equally accessible to everybody, there's no litmus test for getting in, and we have, we decide that we want a thirty percent cost recapture because we, you know, some of our folks, you know, we have a voluntary sliding scale and that's fine. If we do that and then that's what our program goals are and then our manager says, "I have this really underperforming program, I don't have a lot of kids participating, I don't have a lot of adults participating, we've tried it a couple of rounds, it's really expensive, it's, we're not going to meet our cost recapture goal, we'd rather see us reprogram into other areas where we have more participation." And I guess what I'm saying is I don't see that process going on now. It's not transparent to me, it's not transparent to the citizens. That's what I'm looking for, not, I don't have a conversation about library cellphones. I found it interesting, but I found the employee appreciation interesting in terms of the dollar figures because I looked at that and I thought, wow, are we spending that on these employee appreciation days? Would everybody rather have just the day off? Would they rather have an extra five hundred dollars a year? I mean, that was what made it interesting to me, not because, well, I'm after the employee appreciation dollars or anything. But, you know, it was interesting to see what the, what the figures are that are being spent and where there might be other opportunities. And so, all I'm asking for is that we look at ways that we can get better information to make these kinds of decisions. And it doesn't, it doesn't have to be the kinds of onerous things that at least three of us, I know, go through every day in our, in our federal jobs to try to come up with these outcomes. It's very difficult to measure outcomes, it's much easier to measure outputs. And, you know, just starting with the system there and in particular, as Mr. Siemens mentioned, just the, I would be willing to invest in the ability for people to pay for their recreation services by credit card. That's a small thing, it's a small step. We could take that this year, that would be great, just to be able to pay for things by credit card. If the next year we could go to online reservations, that would be like bliss. But I don't think that those are necessarily things that are going to be disruptive to the entire system. And I don't support some whole, you know, big new changeover that's going to disrupt everything. That just happened in my office, we added a new program and everything's down. So, I'm not looking for that.
If I may, I would just say, I think, I don't think we need to get into, I just would share with the council that Ms. Brooks is part of a team that I had put together to actually look at the whole issue of credit card payments, online payments. So, that's underway. I think the issue that I think you raised, which I would welcome this discussion, I know Ms. Hadeve would as well, because she and I have talked about it on numerous occasions, which I think is the high-level policy role that, truthfully, we would all welcome direction from, is this whole issue of cost recovery rates. The city has always had a fairly, now I wouldn't say amorphous, but it's this adult programs should pay for themselves, youth programs shouldn't. But I think in terms of what that more formal cost recovery rate is, I have worked in a number of cities that actually were discussions took place with the council, there was actually a formal policy about that adopted by resolution. That's obviously an individual council-to-council decision. But I know in talking to Ms. Hadeve, then, she's all for that. If there's a particular goal that the council has, she would just like to kind of get it, send some majority of the council what that goal is and we certainly will work towards that.
And I might also observe that anytime we've tried to have that discussion, it ends up, at least in my perception, that the council comes out on the, on the side of basically not charging anybody anything because of people who come in and say, "Well, you can't do this and you can't do that." And anytime we think we're going to have a discussion about cost recovery, it ends up being, there is none.
Right, but I think the key point that you raised there is that the subject of cost recovery or cost capturing is a policy issue. And it's, I think that drives the kind of data that we would need in order to, you know, make that happen. Secondly, the idea of credit cards and so forth is, you know, conjoin a laundry list of other things that I've heard just in this last thirty-five minutes that would probably drive most city staff to drink. But I think that-
But nothing is spilled.
But nothing would be spilled because we'd have an anti-spill measurement. No, I mean, I don't mean to be facetious, but I think that, you know, the policy issue is customer service. And what flows from that, assuming the council, not the staff, but assuming the council can agree on what are the objectives of improving customer service, then the kinds of data that you want to collect flow from that, the kind of programs that you might want flow from that. But it, but these are all policy issues, they're not, you know, the minutia and the weed dwelling. So, that's what I'd like to continue to focus on, is what can we decide whether pay or no pay, cost recovery or no cost recovery? Those are the discussions and debates we need to have on this dais here before we can expect the city staff to respond in a meaningful way.
Hear, hear. Councilmember Siemens, Councilmember Wright, and then we'll consider adjourning.
All right. I'll try to be brief. First of all, you know, what I outlined when I was the first to speak on this topic tonight was what I think is in an ideal budget document and I added a few things that I felt was needed over time, just because if we go into a new budget year, I thought it was something we should be considering. But I think, after hearing my colleagues here tonight, I think there seems to be general agreement that we should be making the policy decisions and setting the goals for our city staff. And that certainly was one of the things that I itemized in what's needed in the budget document is an itemization- document, is an itemization of the goals that we want staff to meet. And I think in doing that, before we can say, yes, all those goals belong in our budget for this year, we need to know what it's going to cost us in resources. And so we need the staff to come back and say, here are the objectives we're going to have to meet to attain those goals, and these are the resources we're going to have to expend to meet those objectives. At that point, whether or not we want to implement ways of knowing whether we actually have attained those objectives by implementing measurements is maybe a separate decision. Because, yes, that is where the majority of the workload would be, is in establishing those measurements and in tracking the measurements to see if we have attained the objectives. But I still think to do our job, we need to set goals. And I think the discussion of receiving detail for specific line items has kind of muddied the discussion some, because I think that information can be valuable, but I don't know that that information needs to be in the budget document itself. It's information we got last year at the end of the budget process, it might have been nicer to have that earlier in the budget process, but I think that information should be available at any time that any council member wants it. We should be able to request a specific segment of our business that we want to see the line items for. And again, I think a machine-readable format would be more in line with the environmentally sensitive nature of the city. But anyways, I think we need to, in this year's budget, if not in every department, maybe we start with just the recreation department, and very clearly itemize the goals that we want to see the department attain, and then get some sense of what are the objectives that the staff are going to attain to meet those goals, and how much is it going to cost us? And not just have a bucket, allocate a bucket of gold for the recreation department.
I'm encouraged by a couple of things. One is that I think the quality of the management of the city and the financials is very high. And so if we were in a situation where they weren't, we wouldn't be able to have this sort of discussion, we wouldn't be at this level of talking about how we can partner with the city manager to help manage the city. So I'm very encouraged by that. I'm also encouraged by, I think, people are saying basically the same thing. You know, there's a sense of back and forth between should we use management, these management numbers, or should we not? But I think the reality is that no one's saying we should use 40 management measures, and no one's saying that we should create management measures that make work for people. And when I've seen these things done effectively, it's not 40 management measures, it's like two or three management measures. And if you haven't chosen those two or three, you're choosing the wrong ratios and the wrong measurements. And then the second thing is that the measurements have to, as much come from the staff saying what they need to determine, are they doing what we've asked them to do? So that the tool is not, and the measurement is not something they have to do in addition to the work. The measurement is their work, in a virtuous, positive circle to create improvement. And, you know, if we have 40 or 50 measurements per department, we're like bean counters gone mad at that point, which would absolutely be crazy. And I think, you know, it sounds like the city manager sort of knows the pluses and minuses of thinking about this issue. And we'll avoid the trap of getting all excited about having all these measures, and looking at these measurements, and then realizing, two years from now, we actually didn't do anything to make the services better for the city. And I very much agree with Doug's point that it's about us setting priorities, and then that would drive what, the few areas we should start slowly with, to look at using this technique to improve things, so.
Would it be helpful for the city manager to come back to us with any staff-generated requests for clarification on policy from the council? The example being the one that the city manager already gave from the recreation department about the cost recovery in recreation, those types of things? Any of those that are generated from staff? Would that be helpful to come back with those?
Sure, I can talk to the management staff and see if there's any other issues that have come up. None, I mean, obviously, you're having a discussion next week about affordable housing, and truthfully, I imagine, I say, I don't know if you'll be able to get through all the priority discussions Thursday evening. My suspicion would be that you'll throw some ideas on the table, you'll want to know what the fiscal impact is, and that I will need to come back. I guess as part of kind of closing the loop, I would say that, once the council sets its priorities, what might be appropriate, since, basically, what you're really, in essence, doing with setting the priorities is you're setting my work plan, and then those flow down through the council. So that's kind of the way you're setting my direction, and I set the staff, is that perhaps, once I have your priorities, perhaps working with the staff, I can come back and take a shot at suggesting some performance measurements tied to those priorities that the council has set, and kind of run those by you all, and see if we're capturing kind of what you're aiming for. I know when the council, I guess I think back several years ago, and my having a discussion with the council pretty early in my tenure, and I think one of the comments I had made is I'm actually, I like to have some common agreement on what is success. I really have, as a manager, have always had a problem with sort of these amorphous goals that don't mean anything, and then at the end, I think I'm doing what you want me to be doing, and you think I missed the boat. So I would like to have, I guess, some commonality in terms of what we're all striving for and what success looks like. So I guess I would just throw that out there.
I agree. I guess I'll just reiterate my point that I think that, to the extent that the council hasn't provided some clear direction on policy to the staff, it makes it that much harder for them to do whatever they think we're trying to have them do. And any clarification from us might make it easier for the types of information that we need to come back to us. Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you. Could we ask the city manager to come back at some soon date, and let us know what changes she proposes in the budget to take account of the things we've had discussed tonight? And I would like to see that.
I think we could ask that.
Yeah, like I say, I think to some degree, it will depend on what the outcome is of your priority discussion. So I think depending on how long it takes the council to work through that process, I'll just need a little time after I actually have your direction on those goals.
I think priorities, though, is a little bit of a different issue than the goals.
I'm not sure I would agree. Truthfully, the way I see it is you would set the overriding policy priorities, let me know, I guess, what the target is that you're aiming for, those actually filter down into goals and management objectives for each of the departments that I would assign in their performance review, and also would flow into the performance measurement process. So I guess I do see them as interrelated. If there's something I'm missing, I need to know that.
I think then what you're seeing as priorities is different than what we've done in the past, which are just major changes in direction of the city staff. They haven't really looked at the individual departments, and what we would like to see the individual departments obtaining as goals.
I think in some cases, depending on what the priority is, those do impact certain departments, and I think if you look at housing and community development, for instance, when the council, two years ago, set the revitalization of the New Hampshire Avenue Quarter, that had dramatic impacts in terms of how the planning staff in particular did their work. So I think there's a very clear correlation. I think if there are other objectives, I think those are things that the council, truthfully, needs to assign to me. I'm not trying to play semantics, but I guess I just do want to be clear, the council is actually setting objectives for me, not for individual department heads who do not report to this council. So I guess that's probably a semantics issue, but-
Right, and that's why I'm clear that we're not talking about setting objectives, we are just talking about setting goals.
Right, and I guess, Councilmember Siemens, I see those things as somewhat interrelated, whether you call them priorities or goals.
Okay, we'll see where Thursday goes.
Yeah, exactly. I think it'll be a lot clearer for hopefully all of us after that.
Any other comments, or save your next breath for Thursday? We're adjourned.